I'd like to call to order the town council regular session at 7:35 and the date is Tuesday, October 11th. If you could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please Dale?
Council President Whaley?
Here.
Council Vice President McAtee?
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil. Four members present. Councilwoman Eddy is absent.
I would also like to just note that Councilwoman Eddy is celebrating with family members tonight. And we have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of September 26, 2011.
I move approval of those minutes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. We also have approval of the minutes of the regular session, September 26, 2011.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. And the last minutes that we have is the closed executive session, September 26, 2011.
Make a motion to approve the closed executive session, September 26.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. Would any council member like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. At this time, with council...
I'd like to make a motion to move new business item B to the front of the meeting.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. And at this time, we have a resolution to honor a very special person, Ray Nickerson. And if we could have him come forward, I'd like to read the proclamation.
Yes. Right there, Ray. You're familiar with that spot.
Oh yeah.
And it won't be the last time that you're at that mic.
He did not disappoint.
Welcome, Ray. It's a great honor to be presenting you with this proclamation tonight. So let me read it. Whereas Raymond Nickerson, AICP, holds a master's degree in community planning and area development from the University of Rhode Island and is certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. And whereas he began his association with the town of South Kingston in 1983 when he was first appointed to the Conservation Commission, serving on that commission until his appointment to the Planning Board on July 9, 1985. And whereas Raymond redesigned from the Planning Board in May 1989 and was subsequently hired by the town of South Kingston as a principal planner on November 2, 1992. And whereas Raymond has served in his capacity as principal planner as the staff liaison to the Historic District Commission, the Conservation Commission, and the Economic Development Committee, and as the town liaison to the Coastal Resources Management Council, which kept you very busy. And whereas Raymond's leadership and experience has benefited the town in such diverse areas as hazarded mitigation, planning, wetland flagging, and mosquito abatement, as well as in grant administration, particularly in regards to the Community Development Block Grant program, which has provided a myriad of benefits to local nonprofit organizations and the town's low and moderate income residents. And whereas, everyone loves Raymond. And he will miss his experienced intellectual style and hope he enjoys his Sunday afternoons of watching football without having to worry about Monday morning deadlines and evening meetings. Now therefore, we the town council of the town of South Kingston do hereby extend our best wishes to Raymond T. Nickerson for a happy, healthy retirement and good luck in all future endeavors.
I'll be a little repetitive from the retirement get-together we had, but a couple of things I really need to mention. I said before that when you... All the years that I worked on a Saturday night, you'd go to a social occasion and I was always amazed at how many people complained about going to work on Monday. And for the most part, it wasn't the particular tasks or job they had, it was the people they worked with. And in all those 19 years, I really never could add to the conversation. You couldn't find a better group of people than work here at the town hall. And it's been a hell of a ride. I've really enjoyed it. I did want to thank you folks up there, the present council and the councils that have gone before. We do our jobs as staff. We get paid. It's really that's all we have coming to us. But you folks and your predecessors, over the years, always went out of your way to publicly acknowledge the job that staff had done and it's appreciated. And the same thing for the town manager. But thank you all.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Could we also have a motion to move new business item A?
I'll make a motion to move new business item A forward also at this time.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. And we have another...
Could I just have the last word? We're not done with Ray yet.
No, we're not. That's what I said to him as I shook his hand. He's not going too far.
We may want to change some of the resolutions that says things in the past tense and make that current tense, present tense, because I expect to have Ray continue to do work for the town. Specifically, he'll be dealing with much of the Mattoonik issue still as we go forward with the Coastal Resource Council. He'll also be continuing to provide us with assistance when it deals with the CDVG program as well. I can't say enough good about the guy. I am sorry to see him leave our employ, but happy for him that it was his decision to make and that this was the right time for him. So we say goodbye and hello at the same time.
That's great. We also have another proclamation tonight for George Loomis. So if George could come forward. Welcome, George. And we have a proclamation you've given many, many years, some to our town as well. So let me read it. Whereas George Loomis was appointed to the South Kingston Conservation Commission in October 1987 and has served on the commission for 24 years. And whereas during his tenure, George periodically served as Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary of the Commission. And whereas since the time of his appointment, George has been a major contributor to Conservation Commission efforts and the development of important environmental protection measures at the municipal level, including a soil erosion and sediment control ordinance, town tree ordinance, and comprehensive storm water management program. And whereas George's professional expertise as a soil scientist was instrumental in the development of the town of South Kingston onsite wastewater management program initiated to prevent degradation of groundwater and surface water quality and associated irreplaceable resources. And whereas, as the Director of the New England Onsite Wastewater Training Program, George has provided a protocol to ensure that the design, installation, and maintenance of onsite wastewater treatment systems are of the highest standards for Rhode Island communities, including South Kingston. And whereas George has worked tirelessly, both as a professional and volunteer, to promote environmental awareness efforts that protect and preserve critical ecological resources, systems, including the Salt Ponds region, Sorgetucket Basin, and Porketuck watershed. Now therefore, we the town council of the town of South Kingston do hereby extend our thanks and appreciation to George Loomis for his contribution and devoted service to the town of South Kingston and wish him well in all of his future endeavors. Thank you, George.
Twenty-four years.
So not to be one to miss an opportunity, I'd like to say that it's been a pleasure. It's been an honor to serve my community. And I've had the good pleasure of working with some great people here at the town. It's been some great town councils in the past 24 years and staff has been super. Working with Steve and most notably, working with Ray. Ray has just been... In the 19 years he was here, he served as our staff person for the Conservation Commission. He did an outstanding job. So he made our job a lot easier. The many commissions that I've served with and many members are dedicated people. As you know, being a Conservation Commission, you're an advisory person. You give an advisory opinion and nobody has to really buy into your opinion. They can take it or they can leave it. Thankfully, a lot of the stuff that we've advised on has been taken to heart. But some things that have disappointed me that haven't been taken to heart, which I think there's always room for improvement. As a teacher, I always think that there's always room for improvement. So there's still work to be done with wastewater management in the town, work to be done on tree board, other related things, and the interface between Conservation Commission recommendations and zoning board actions. I think there's definitely needs to be some work sessions done in it. Unfortunately, I won't be around to enjoy all that, but you have great people on the Conservation Commission now. Very qualified people, dedicated people. They're there because they believe in protecting the environment, public health within the community. So ask the council to continue to support them and give them assistance as needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George. Thank you.
Which brings us to, I believe, Communications D. This is a resolution adopted October 3, 2011 by the Westerly Town Council requesting the General Assembly to adopt legislation requiring the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management to approve the use of more cost-effective denitrification onsite wastewater treatment systems as received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We discussed this resolution at the work session and we decided to add at least two more paragraphs. And I will read those into the record. We're going to insert... Is this the one we're inserting on?
Yes.
We're inserting, whereas Rhode Island Department of... Rhode Island DEM should give due consideration to revising its approval protocols to allow for more expeditious review and approval of emerging INA wastewater disposal technologies, including the potential to give greater reciprocity to systems approved in other jurisdictions and shortening the time required for testing and data collection for Class 1 and Class 2 systems. And whereas RIDEM and CRMC should reanalyze the geographic basis for requiring system installation and reconsider the appropriateness of the triggering mechanisms for requiring such systems for renovations or additions to existing structures. In particular, the language that we'd like to add would also be, where a proposed construction or renovation or addition can be determined to not involve the creation of additional wastewater flows and the existing system is functioning properly. So we were going to add that language too. I move that we support Communication D with the new paragraphs.
Do you have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready? You do. Motion second?
...
No. I'd just like to add too, if I could. Currently, the way it is, is that if you go to get a building permit and you want to add on to your house in any way, even if it's not adding on a room or any... Even if you're not so much enlarging your house in that you'd be using more of your wastewater treatment flows, you wouldn't be putting any additional burden on your septic system. In those cases, we're asking that, yes, let people make the improvements. Let them add on to their deck. If the town approves of it, if it goes along with zoning requirements and building permits, then why not improve your home? Add on, you know, a deck or an overhang or a closet or even an extra room if it's not going to increase wastewater flow. We think that those particular projects should be allowable without having to, you know, go for a permit to redo your septic system. And so that's the purpose of the change in language, to make it go one step further.
Can we just add to that? It's not the whole town. It's what's in the Salt Pond region, SAM, CRMC Land Use Clarification Map, that, all the colored sections. So it's not all the town. It's certainly everything below Route 1 and some north of it, but not the whole town. So people who might be having an expansion might not fall into this classification, but those areas that are highlighted on the SAM map are what we're discussing. So I just want to clarify so you don't scare the whole town.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. Which brings us to Communication E. Welcome. This is a communication dated September 15, 2011 from Jason Lynn, Director, Westerly Innovations Network, seeking support for the Turn Grease Into Fuel project and requesting to make a presentation to the town council is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. And we welcome all of you tonight. And we're going to come down into the front row so that we can see your presentation.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jason. Jason and I'm Director of Westerly Innovations Network. Okay, we started the project TGIF since these kids were at the fifth grade and now it's their third year in the project. I'm glad to see there are a couple communications going on between Westerly and South Kingston. That's a really good sign. And let me introduce them to do the project. Thank you.
Jim, can you see? Do you want to go down? Or do you want to move down?
No, we'll go over here.
Okay. Hello? Wow. Thank you.
Thank you, honey.
So you distributed 100 of these?
Hello?
I think I do want to go down there.
Hi, I'm Vanessa.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Lynn.
Hi, I'm Miles Tamel.
Hi, I'm John Perino.
I'm Taylor Fiori Chediar.
And we are the win team, Westerly Innovations Network. And we started project TGIF, Turn Grease Into Fuel. And we are here today to introduce project TGIF to South Kingston. Right now, we have a short video clip of our overall project.
We live five miles away from the ocean. It's a beautiful place and we can do all sorts of things such as swimming in the surfboard. We don't want to see it come living.
At the same time, global warming is getting worse. We need that now or else our energy will have to suffer the effects. The temperature will rise. It's all sea levels. Also, when people dump oil down the drain, the grease floods the town sewer system and it is very expensive to fix. Instead of waiting around, we did something to help. We took action. We are the win team and we started project TGIF, Turn Grease Into Fuel. Project TGIF goes exactly what it sounds like. We recycle old cooking oil based ingredients into biofuel. Each layer of children's bases is loaded with biofuel and biofuel. Offset 2.4 kilograms covered by accident from being released into the atmosphere.
We also refined biofuel by ourselves to test it both practical and efficient. We went through all the steps of the chemical process, but we could say methanol and lime to make catalysts of dioxide to feed it and filtering with raw oil and food stuff.
We then combined the two to start the train desiccation process that creates biofuel. And results showed that waste cooking oil is the most cost-effective source of biofuel. We asked local restaurants to donate their grease to recycle. To date, we have over 100 restaurants participating in our program. We also set up a separate bill at the town transfer station for residents to recycle their grease. We met with a local company to collect the grease from restaurants in the recycling center. The then-released waste in our facility was converted into biofuel. Another local company called Nardi Rule has a new biofuel industry set to our local charitable organizations. The biofuel industry is for emergency needs. We made the largest nonprofit to give to people involved. We can't drown more than 30,000 flyers at supermarkets and made a video commercial to encourage people to recycle their waste.
We also made presentations to the town council and local elementary schools to tell them about our project.
Will you help us recycle grease?
Yes, we will.
They have to clean your hands for me because it helps us all two hours at once. It helps me learn more and it's made to be needed.
They asked local residents in restaurants to recycle their waste cooking oil to have it converted into biofuel. They had the town of Westerly establish a public cooking oil recycling facility at the Westerly's transfer station. The team was able to collect more than 3,000 gallons of grease per month, to date.
You know, with biodiesel, it became beautiful a few years ago. We were just told basically, well, it hasn't been done in Rhode Island before, so we can't do it. And you've proven that wrong by doing this. And so something that you guys, you guys have done this, you've gone out, it's great. And hopefully you serve as a model for us when we start talking about biodiesel for trucks and stuff in the town. And someone tells us, no, we can't do it, or it's going to cost more money. Or this and that, we can say, hey, this group of kids from school did it and they put us in shame. So thank you for doing this because you started Western along that path. So thank you.
We hope to double the amount of fresh gas we're producing every year for the next three years. This will allow us to produce 16,000 meters of biofuel per month, which will offset one and a half billion kilogram of carbon dioxide when we release the atmosphere every year. To broaden our impact, we are also expanding our project to neighboring camps such as Warwick, Maryganse, and Missoula. We can all breathe around this mall more than this world and we can make a difference.
That concludes our video presentation. We are now like to start our presentation. In recent times, global warming has become an increasingly devastating issue to people all over the world. We found that the main cause of this was burning fossil fuels, from burning coal and power plants to cars, and now to the North Pole. Because of global warming, the polar ice cap will melt, which causes the polar bears to drown because they will have no rest. We're worried. We're very worried.
We live in Westerly, right on the coastline. If global warming continues at its current rate, New York City and other coastal areas will be underwater by the year 2100.
As you can see, global warming is a very problematic issue in today's society. So to help combat this problem, we created a team and did some research to see what we could do to help.
We researched alternative energies such as biofuel and how they can help slow down global warming. When we visited the Energy Solutions Expo at URI in 2008, we learned that waste cooking oil can be converted into biofuel. To learn further about this process, we toured a biofuel refinery. We also made biofuel ourselves to find out which source of waste vegetable oil was most cost-effective. In addition, we interviewed CEOs of local charities about the local need for home heating oil. We recently toured the Warwick Sewer Plant and Water Testing Lab to learn about how waste cooking oil can damage the sewers when poured down the drain.
From this research, we have generated several conclusions. First of all, we found that biofuel is an alternative energy. If you replace petroleum-based diesel with biofuels, you can cut down carbon dioxide emissions way up to two-thirds. Also, biodiesel that derives from waste cooking oil does not compete with food sources such as corn and soybeans. Our survey shows that almost three-quarters of residents improperly dispose of their waste cooking oil by either pouring it down the drain or disposing of it with their trash. Fog, which is fats, oils, and grease, is the number-one cause of sewer clogs in America. Also, there are approximately 2.5 billion gallons of waste cooking oil generated in the United States each year. Imagine what we could do if we could recycle all of that oil and prevent it from getting into the sewer systems. Lastly, approximately 70% of homes in New England use petroleum-based diesel to heat their homes. We could easily replace this with biofuel without any modifications to the furnace.
Our action plan was created from a single drop of grease and incorporates three different steps. First, raising awareness. Second, collection and refining. And third, biofuel distribution.
We split raising awareness into two parts. We began by targeting residential waste cooking oil. We handed out kitchen calendars to local supermarkets and made radio... We also gave presentations to local elementary schools in Warwick and Westerly. We targeted commercial waste cooking oil. Right now, we have over 108 restaurants participating in our program.
Right now, we have over 108 restaurants participating in our program. We also asked vendors at festivals to donate their waste cooking oil. We also gave presentations to several Chamber of Commerce's. And also, this past year, we introduced a bill to our state legislators. The bill mandates that all businesses have to recycle their waste cooking oil. In July, the governor signed on this bill.
We set up collection sites and had a contractor come and pick up the waste cooking oil, bring it to a refinery, where it's refined into biodiesel.
This biodiesel is used in two ways. First of all, our program keeps 20% of the biodiesel produced. This goes to charity and is then in turn used for heating assistance. Currently, we have donated 9,200 gallons of bioheat to local families in need. This has an approximate value of more than $35,000 and has been able to heat 92 homes. Also, we are planning to donate 5,200 additional gallons this month. The remaining 80% of the biodiesel is sold in the open market and is used in trucks, buses, and marine vessels. And currently, we are working with the Westerly Public School Department and hoping to put a portion of biodiesel in the school buses.
To sum it up, we've set up eight collection sites in 9,000 cities, which covers an area of over 200,000 residents. Our project currently collects over 4,000 gallons of grease per month. To date, we've generated 72,000 gallons of biodiesel. By EPA's calculations, we've offset almost 1.5 million pounds of carbon dioxide from being released into the atmosphere. For our efforts, we've gained a lot of media coverage. Most recently, we were featured on the United Nations Environmental Programs website, as well as we've been on a documentary for MTV that was broadcasted all over the world. We've been on TV such as CNN, NBC Connecticut, and NBC Rhode Island, and we've been in many magazines such as Scholastic, the Yonah Tonza, as well as TPO or Treatment Plant Operator, the number-one leading magazine in the sewer industry.
These are examples of other waste cooking oil recycling locations, Westerly, Stonington, and Warwick. And hopefully, South Kingston will soon follow.
This is an overview of our project TGIF, which can be easily implemented in any area that uses cooking oil to cook food. In the next five years, we plan to expand to all six New England states.
Let's work together to save our planet.
Um, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Well, I have a question.
We have some questions. We're just going to get back to our mics.
I'll start. So in Westerly, how much did it cost the town to set up at the waste transfer station? Do you know offhand?
Well, the contractor that we work with, Newport Biodiesel, they provide the receptacle and also provide maintenance.
Okay, all right. And then I have another question. Is this free to the restaurants and that service? So they can just put it in there, so there's no fee for them? Okay? Yeah?
Actually, the one that we were planning on in South Kingston is for residents. Because restaurants, we have our, the company called Newport Biodiesel, who can directly collect it from the restaurants.
Okay, I've seen them around town. Yeah, yeah. Good. I hope that they're getting every restaurant, because we have a, that grease clog pipe that you showed, that is a big problem for us right on Tower Hill Road. We do have, that is a concern for our town, right, Steve? We, yes, that's one of our big clog areas, so we're well aware of it as a town council. Thank you. Very, very impressive presentation. I really do appreciate you all coming here, and good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we have further questions here? Councilman O'Neill.
I'm going to start with Steve, and then I'll work the question over to this gang. We've talked about for years grease traps. What in fact, grease traps with restaurants? And before these new laws were signed in, were restaurants required to somehow or another segregate? Or is that where they're private sewers, excuse me, private septic and not sewers?
Well, grease traps are a requirement for any type of a restaurant operation. I think either John or Jeff could address the code far better than I, but no, grease traps are required. Unfortunately, there's still materials that get through those traps.
Okay, but.
I mean, one of our major areas and concern has always been on Old Tower Hill Road.
Yeah.
The pitch of the pipe is such that the materials stay for considerable periods of time. And as the materials coagulate, they end up reducing the ability for the pipe to deal with the capacity, the volume that passes through it.
Where does the segregation take place? After it's cooked and used? Right now, is it just, many cases being poured down the drain? Where is this grease trap? Where's it collected?
The material shouldn't be poured down the drain. I believe that they have to bring those, the waste oils have to go into a separate container.
Yeah, typically, the grease traps are after the three-base sink. And what we try to do is, at least with new installations, is make sure the, any of the wash water or dishwasher is segregated from the domestic. We always try to keep the domestic separate. And we also now require on any of the new restaurants, for example, Applebee's, the new Burger King, Taco Bell, any of those restaurants, we also have them make, put in an automated grease trap. Typically, the older style is manual, which takes a little bit of effort on the, you know, the restaurateur's pot to keep that grease trap clean. So now, we have automated grease traps that wick off the grease, so there's no labor required. And that's, those seem to be working rather well. So anytime anybody comes in for, you know, rehab or renovations, we require the automated grease traps.
And this new law that kids referred to, was this a Rhode Island law signed by the governor? And it requires all restaurants can help us out with that? All but, yeah.
They have to recycle their waste.
Okay.
Jason, if you wanted to go to the mic.
I would like to add something to it, because this group of kids, they work very closely with the Warwick Sewer Authorities. And then for their reports, most problems really came from residential area, not commercial area, because they got good regulations for all the businesses, restaurants. So they recently have a very heavy clog, sewer clogs in Oakland Beach that is completely residential. So I think the recycling, you know, programs is for the residents that will be very effective.
Yeah, I certainly concur with that. It took a few decades for folks to understand recycling. And once we made that a lot easier, whether it be at the transfer station or pickups, they got the message. And maybe there's some way that we can educate the resident owners, again, how to segregate and not toss this into the garbage.
I think the students also, they went to school by schools to do their presentations that also educate their generations to do recycle. And that's also very effective, because at the age, it's the best age, you know, got passion and to learn. And then when they grow up, they want to do, you know, the good thing for the environment. So I think their request is, you know, since it's really costs nothing to the town, and they would like to have the town on the permission to instill a receptacle at the transfer station. And also, they distribute some kind of flyers and calendars. Those are the samples they distributed in Westerly and also Stonington, Connecticut. And they distributed 2,500 calendars and also 3,500 that flyers. And the flyers, you know, they both go through the school system. So it's just, we bring like thousands of copies to the, you know, superintendent, then they just go have the elementary school kids take home. And the calendars, they will hang in their kitchen to remind them, don't dump that oil down the drain. So if, you know, I know the school committee probably not here, but if you can pass the information, so we know, we, the WIN team would like to use their award money to donate all the calendars to South Kingston citizens.
So, I'm sorry, Carol.
It says in your brochure that you have a recycling receptacles in Stonington as well as Peasdale, Rhode Island. Where is the one in Peasdale?
The Peasdale receptacle is at the Welcome House, but we thought that it would be more efficient to set up a receptacle at the South Kingston Transfer Station, because it's not necessarily often that somebody visits a charity, but many people do go to recycle their waste at the transfer station.
And what would you suggest that people use as a recycle container? Is there any kind of, anything you want? Just pour it in, back in the bottle, or?
Any container, really.
And you pour it into a bigger container there? Okay.
So it's a very good idea.
Yeah, so the photos of the truck collecting that, that was at the Westerly Transfer Station? Okay, thank you.
Now, if, we're definitely going to pass this on to the school department. So would they need permission to make copies of this to distribute among?
Certainly, those are from our website. You know, actually, Westerly School System links our website to the school's website, so everybody can download the brochures, see some information, you know, that's also educational.
But it's probably wise for them to probably at least make the contact with you too, Jason, if they're going to distribute this.
Correct. They do have our email address and also my phone numbers on the brochures. And I will contact the town manager's office as well.
That's great. And my question to the eighth-grade students, are you going to stay together and move this project next year when you move on to high school? Yeah, that's, and are you trying to recruit more students or, you know? Yeah. That's fabulous. And here.
This is the future of Fortune 500 standing in front of us right here.
Hopefully, future town council members as well.
Get the nonprofit stuff.
Yeah, I just want to also recognize in some literature that you gave for the viewing audience tonight. This project received recognition nationally and internationally. The project won the 2010 President's Environmental Youth Awards and met with President Obama at the White House last year. So you got to travel to Washington to meet our president. And this project also, video was also played at the United Nations Environmental Programs website, so it's quite impressive. Yeah. Further questions?
Jim has one.
Jim?
Yeah, there was a truck there, well, you had a couple trucks. One, I think, said the Grease Company on the side, something like that. One of the trucks collecting grease at the, anyway, the question is, are there businesses in this business, but they need our help? Because it'd probably be very unprofitable to have to drive around to a million places. But are there businesses in this business relying on communities like Westerly and/or South Kingston to have one collection point or maybe a couple? So everyone can benefit by this.
And actually, you know, this kind of business is changing quite a bit, because the green economy and then the biofuel request everywhere. So really, for example, they so far, including next week's donations, they're going to totally donate almost about $50,000 to four charities, you know, all from the sale of the grease. So, you know, when Newport Biodiesel, that's our contractor, when they refine into biodiesel, they sell at open market for, you know, the trucks or marine vessels, anywhere, so they can make money there. So it's not necessarily costing money, but that's their business expense. So really, when they're driving around, and that's the cost of business. And then they are for-profit organizations. We are nonprofit.
How many, how many businesses in Rhode Island?
They are, I think Newport Biodiesel is one of the biggest one, and several others we ran into really came from Massachusetts. And then, since our program, as you saw the presentations, a big portion of our proceeds, actually, 100% of our proceeds is go to the charities. And then, so we kind of, in business side with the restaurants, we sometimes fighting with, you know, the for-profit organizations from out of state and try to grab this piece. So it's, you know, they call it Greece War out there.
Yeah.
Greece War, I love it.
Who'd have thought?
That's great.
Further questions, Kathy?
I'm not sure what, who's handling the transfer station down in Westerly, the main company.
That's Newport Biodiesel at the point. You saw that we use Grease Co before, but Newport bought them, Newport Biodiesel bought that company. That's why, right?
I was talking about the overall, like, who's handling the trash? And is it, you know, waste management? Do you know is the main? And do they have any questions or concerns, you know, because they?
You can call the transfer stations, the guy in charge, I think is, but you can call the town hall, and he will be able to answer your questions. But from my understanding, he told me that was a very low-maintenance portion. So they moved their recycling bin next to the plastic papers and cans, everything. You know, people just come over and then recycle and leave their containers in another garbage, you know, bins there. So it's very low-maintenance.
I only ask because with our, we have a contract with, I can't think of their names off the top of my head, and they were used to do my recycling before I did it. Who do we have at the transfer station? Waste haulers, that was, I wrote plenty of checks out to them. I'm sure we'd have to look into and clear it with them too about space and issues if this was a viable option, so.
We'd have to review the.
It would have to be reviewed.
And when you see the picture out there, there were three locations. One is the Stonington, Connecticut site. That one is outdoor. They just have a cover on top of it and then have, I think it's 150 gallons receptacles in stainless steel. So that one, you know, take, just outdoors, no space. But in the Westerly side, because the manager there, they want to be more indoor and cleaner, so they put like inside a cabin. And then, next to that was the frozen bobs and that's on one side and have the oils on this side. So you can see it's very clean.
Do we have any questions from the audience? Okay, any further questions? This was unbelievable, and it's nice to see, you know, the youth doing such great work. And Jason, you know, kudos to you for, you know, giving the children the time, so.
Thank you.
We will definitely continue this dialogue here at the table, and hopefully, we'll move forward.
Yes.
So thank you.
Good luck with your travels.
Good luck.
Yes. Great job, great job. Very nice.
Thank you.
I can only imagine when each of them gets their driver's license.
They'll be here before they know it.
Be thousands of places you'll be able to visit.
So do we have a motion? We can bring it back for further discussion at later date, you think?
So for, for new business item E, is that new business? I'm sorry. No, we're on communication item E. We will forward this to the town manager for further review.
Do we have a second?
And that's certainly not the kiss of death. We hope that we can find a way to make good use of this.
We, um.
Yeah, I would like to see us support this, but obviously, we have to look into it.
Yeah, and we'll bring it back for further discussion.
I'd certainly like to support all your efforts. I think it's the wave of the future.
And just to follow up with that, Steve, the folks out there at the transfer station, they do have an oil collection facility. Is it just for waste oil?
Yes, it's waste oil that's collected at this point.
Okay.
What we will take a look at is whether or not placement of a unit could be placed at the transfer station. I would just remark that the council received the recycling memorandum in the last package where we are taking in $60,128 in recycling efforts for South Kingston from solid waste, from resource recovery. Laura Pointek, our recycling coordinator, I can have her take a look at what type of structure may be possible, as well as to deal with, with waste haulers to determine whether or not there is a location which may be viable at that transfer station.
That'd be great.
I read that briefly, but that was basically the same volume, but the price was like double or triple from?
Well, we were up about 1,000 tons, I believe. We were up from, well, 2873 up to 2924 tons. We were up, you know, about 50 tons over what the prior year was, but the price is based on what the, what salvage value was of the materials that were recycled. It was that big of a difference of one year.
Yeah, tremendous.
All right, so what I will do is I'll advise my, my motion to move this forward for further review by Laura, our recycling coordinator.
Well, certainly, it'll come through my office. I'll have John and Laura take a look at it, and then I'll advise the council on what actions, if any, we can take.
Enter the town manager.
Sounds good. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second, all in favor. Aye. Posed abstention, motion carries for 00. Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
He's going to, yes, to unplug something or do, I don't know what he has.
Which brings us to the agenda, comments from interested citizens. Anyone would like to make a comment, if you could, come to the mic, we welcome you.
The manager's report, I've asked Vin Murray to make a short presentation tonight on a grant that the town is administering at this point entitled Healthy Places by Design. There's a press release that was included in the packet, and what we're looking to do is to develop interest by our residents in being able to answer a survey, as well as to provide input on how we can provide for healthy environments within the town and possibly look at what amendments would be necessary with our comp plan for future development proposals to be considered to provide a more healthy space for people to, who live within the community. So with that, I'll let Vin explain the program and what we expect to be doing during the week of November 11th through the 17th.
Thanks, Vin.
The Healthy Places by Design Grant Program is a grant from the Department of Health to the town. We're one of three communities that are piloting this effort in the state of Rhode Island. I think it's a fairly unique program in New England and perhaps even beyond. This is a $225,000 grant, of which the town is receiving about 125, just shy of that. And we have a major partner in this effort, which is the South County YMCA as our community-based organization. The goal of the project is to incorporate community health policies and local comprehensive planning and ordinances in order to promote a more active lifestyle in the community. We will, in the process, we hope to address issues as to how to make our streets and sidewalks more walkable and bikeable, how to enhance recreation opportunities, and to provide better access to healthy foods in the community. Community participation is an integral part of this program, and we're also partnering to a more limited degree with the Johnny Cake Center and Thundermist Health Centers. And there'll be some of the early portions of the project, which, we actually applied for this grant back in January, and the paperwork to begin the work in earnest really got processed in the middle of August, August 18th, and we've been working on it since. But some of the outreach that we're using and assessments, there are a series of what they call chilis that are taking place in the town among various community organizations, one of which was begun here in Town Hall today, and that's a Community Healthy Living Index. It's like a focus group that talks about some of the issues I mentioned, you know, complete streets, bikeability, walkability, access to recreational opportunities, the lifestyles of the communities, and access to healthy foods. Those assessments are going on now through the, through the YMCA and the Health Department. There's also a community survey that we just mailed out, postcards last week, about seven, a little better than 700 of them to a sampling of the community to generate interest in it. It's a 10-minute survey, which is available online through the project website, which But anyway, there'll be also, the survey is also available at the Town Hall, the Guild, Senior Center, all of our libraries, and there's paper copies, as well as Johnny Cake and Thundermist. So that's one of the assessments, they have the survey and the chilis are two of the assessment products. The kickoff for the project in the public meeting sense will occur on, here in the Town Hall on October the 25th, as part, as the Planning Board's work session be the sole topic. There'll be a presentation about the project that night. We're hoping to have a good engaged dialogue with the community about what this means. It is a little different from typical land use planning, but it seeks to see how you can bring healthy community promotion into the land use and, and community facilities aspects of the town, among other things. So that'll, that'll be the kickoff. Then there's also a few workshops that'll be presented at the YMCA, and I'll just mention them quickly. On October the 18th at the YMCA, there'll be a workshop entitled Making Our Community More Walkable and Bikeable. And this, these workshops are being sponsored by Grow Smart, which is also a partner in the, in the effort. So that's one. There'll also be a workshop on Wednesday, October the 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the YMCA on planning and designing mixed-use centers. And that talks about village development patterns, which the Planning Board and the town has strongly embraced because it reflective of our history as a, as a community. And that, that again will be under Grow Smart. Then there'd be a workshop on Saturday, November the 5th, at Thundermist, Making It Easier To Get Healthy Food. And that's a, that'll be, you know, a promote, an outreach to connecting people better with healthy food choices. And if, another workshop will be on Wednesday, November 9th, at the YMCA from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And that will be Keeping Farms and Local Food in Our Future. So those are some of the community events that will precede what we're calling our Healthy Community Summit, which will ensue on October, oh, the opening public meeting would be Tuesday, October, excuse me, Tuesday, November the 15th, at 6:30 p.m. at the YMCA. And that'll be the start of like a, kind of like a charrette process of engaging the public around healthy community issues and how we can integrate that. There'll be a community open house on Thursday, November the 17th, to further this discussion. And then it'll be a closing public meeting on the public process back here at the Town Hall on November the 22nd. We will be posting on the town's website under Latest News, a detail on these meetings coming up, because there'll be a lot of them. We've made an outreach to the local press and also the state press to try to get some publicity about this unique opportunity for our community to, you know, look in a little bit different direction in terms of planning towards the health of the community, which is, I think it's an exciting prospect because it's a positive oriented effort towards making better what we have. Well, I think when we looked at the goal, goals of the grant, we felt that the town has very good health infrastructure in place to promote lifestyles, just given our, our parks and our natural setting and all the facilities that are available to community members through, through the town or through some of the nonprofit organizations or private organizations. But this is kind of a way to kind of bring those all together and at least speak about them in public policy-wise in an integrated fashion. We'll have to see where it leads us, but I think I'm pleased to have this opportunity to be involved in this, and I think we're, the state is planning to make this, after the piloting is done for, you know, North Kingston, South Kingston, and Pawtucket, to apply this as a comprehensive plan, actually requirement for the balance of the state community. So we're just getting underway, and it should be very interesting and exciting. We will have a posting of the more detail on the various workshops and meetings on the town's website, and then with links to the project website, with links to the, the survey of, and so we're trying to, you know, gather that information to further this effort. So it's, it's, it's different, but it's, it's exciting. So if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but.
I love it. That sounds great. Questions here at the table?
Vin, what was the, a couple of dates I couldn't make, but the Y, the 26th, the YMCA, was that October 26th? You didn't say a time on that one. I'm just trying to figure out where I can fit one of them.
At that 6:00 p.m., that's planning and designing mixed-use centers.
Okay.
And that's Wednesday, 26th of October, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Y.
Okay.
The Y, as part of the grant, will be providing families wanting to attend, there'll be childcare at the Y, at those, those meetings that are hosted there, so.
I don't need that anymore, but thanks.
Well, I'm just saying, just for generally, but, and they're also, you know, the meetings hosted at the Y will have light snacks and beverages available, because we're trying to make this not just a presentation of a stay-at-nature, you know, something exciting like these young people gave earlier to the town councils, so.
Carol.
Vin, I was just wondering, after all of these great ideas that I'm sure everybody will come up with, between the survey and the different meetings that you have, is, do you expect that there'll be more funding to actually fund the ideas once?
Well, there, there might be. I guess the process has to conclude with a, kind of like an, an action strategy of how we would integrate these, the ideas and concepts into our comp plan or and/or possibly ordinances. We'll have to see how that plays out, but the Health Department has indicated that there may be some additional funding available to, you know, do some implementation of some of the ideas that, you know, and they really can run the gamut from better signage on the bike path, or new brochures to promote the bike, bike path, or wayfinding signage so people feel more comfortable knowing where they would go, walking in the community, or, you know, what they were, you know, where businesses are located that they may want to access. So there's a lot of different levels to it. It could also mean better promotion of farmers' markets, or like the, the Roadie Fresh Initiative, integrating that better into our community. We're trying to really outreach to everybody to get the broader space of ideas back so we can figure out where this goes. We kind of have, kind of like free range in some respects, but, you know, there's parameters, but I think there's opportunity for creativity, and I would expect that's what this community will come up with, so.
So will this tie into the complete streets and?
It, that is definitely a part of the driving force to this, which the town council had passed the resolution on some while back, and I think that's a concept that fits nicely into this planning strategy. Recently had a consultant with, last week actually, a bikeability assessment he conducted, and that will be talked about at one of the workshops, but very interesting individual came, they have a rating system that they use on a national basis to figure out if, you know, what, how bikeable the community is and what some of the opportunities for improvement might, might present itself. But I think we did pretty decent on that, because I think we are pretty bikeable and walkable, especially in the core areas, but, you know, it's, it'll provide some very different twists and ideas for, for the community to take a look at and figure out what fits well here and what, you know, what may not, but.
The last Wednesday, I believe, was Walk to School International Day.
That's right, yeah.
And Wakefield Elementary School welcomed, I think they had about 200 kids. I was able to get to it, and Abel Collins was there speaking to the kids as well, and I just greeted the kids and let them know, you know, keep physically fit, and the most important thing is you can take care of your body. But they had, they had quite a few kids walking to school that day.
I came upon that caravan on High Street coming into work, and it was, it was, it was huge, actually.
It was, it was quite impressive. And the other thing, the school committee has a wellness committee, and they've had it for years, and I bet you that this would be right up their alley. So somehow, these dates, they'll be on the website, you said?
Yep, yep.
I'll pass these on to, have a meeting with the chair of the school committee next week, I believe. But I think that this would be definitely something that they would be interested in attending as well, that wellness committee.
We're going to outreach to as many folks as possible in, in the town to make sure we get, you know, broad participation, so it's a pretty important initiative, I think.
Sounds great. Further questions here at the table?
If anybody, if anybody missed it, it's a bright green card that comes through, so if somebody hasn't gone through their mail and might want to go through twice, you can't really miss it without having to turn around and read it.
Right, they went out Friday, Friday's mailbag, so.
But it's Saturday.
Thanks, Vin, that was great.
Okay.
Steve, while, can I just backtrack on a few dates that I just, for communications, there is the Paul Massey ribbon cutting this Friday at 11 o'clock. And there's also a ribbon cutting for the town council, if they're interested, that Woodhouse Fire, the colon pizza, the pizza, that's going to be Tuesday, October 18th, at 4 o'clock. And then we have an invitation in our packets from the school committee to join Dr. Leonard Ladaro, I believe, South Kingston High School Cafeteria, that's also, it's at 7 o'clock on Tuesday, October 18th. And then I mentioned the Walk to School Wednesday. And the last thing that I just want to mention that I was able to attend, and I think Carol also went to, was a tour of the Palisades Mill, and just quite impressive with the space that they have rented and the plan for next year. It's, I think we're going to be seeing a lot of traffic go through that Palisades Mill, it's absolutely so. Kudos to Eric Thunberg. Sorry, Steve, back to you. All set, thank you.
I'm set as far as the manager's report's concerned.
Town solicitors report.
Are there questions? I'm also set.
And then we have no appointments. We usually wait until we have a full town council, and I believe there was no appointments that needed addressed tonight. And we've already talked about new business A and B, which brings us to new business item G. This is a resolution authorizing the amendment of an award of contract originally granted on June 13th, 2011, to St. Gene Engineering LLC, 1145 Middle Road, East Greenwich, Rhode Island, for consulting engineering services to prepare matonic shoreline protection design plans and specifications from an amount now to exceed $47,400 to an amount now to exceed $81,900, including a 5,000 contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director of the Town Manager dated October 3rd, 2011, and entitled Matonic Shoreline Protection Engineering Services Contract Amendment.
The council awarded a contract to St. Gene Engineering LLC back on June 13th. At that time, the authorization was to develop design plans for either an armor stone wall to be constructed at Mean High Waterline, or a driven steel pile wall at the town's right-of-way. When we began the analysis, it was determined that we really needed to do the study on both designs. So rather than doing one study at 12,000, we authorized both studies to be conducted. The armor stone wall and the sheet pile wall designs were done to provide the town with the consulting engineer the opportunity to meet with CRMC to review each of the options and to determine their viability. It was determined that the armor stone wall, where it would need to be placed within the coastal zone, as well as the size of the wall, was not something that looked as if it would be able to, to get any type of approval through the coastal as far as a positive staff recommendation, nor did it appear that it would not be subject to multiple federal agencies' review, those being CARVE Engineers, EPA, NOAA. At that point, we directed the application to be submitted for coastal's formal review as a driven steel pile wall. The work that's been done to date on the armor stone wall provided analysis on wave energy, as well as the structural tolerance requirements for that type of a wall. and the structural footprint as to how it would be located within the coastal feature. All of that information was important information to have, both in terms of the initial evaluation, and will most likely come into play in terms of resource information at the time that the reclassification of that beachfront is submitted for Coastal Resource Management Council's consideration. In addition, we needed to do subsurface investigation to determine what the subsurface conditions would yield. That work needed to be approved, and I directed that work to be done. It was completed the last week of September. It took approximately seven days, and as referenced in the memorandum, the overall cost was about $17,500. The key for providing a subsurface investigation at this point is to ensure that we understand what the value would be in terms of the cost of driving steel approximately 35 to 40 feet along the roadside. If we were to encounter serious resistance in terms of boulders or cobble, it would add to the cost. In some cases, engineering contracts can be let without the subsurface conditions being evaluated, and that many times results in a change in conditions in a contractor looking for change orders as far as the value of the project once in the ground. This is a project that needs to be expedited in terms of moving forward and getting the plans set for review by Coastal, and once that approval's in place, to be able to get design documents and hopefully be ready for a springtime construction of that wall. We've also authorized the appraisal to be done on the two carpenter properties adjacent to the Ocean Mist property, since it is our opinion that it was in, it would be in the town's best interest to acquire those properties as a means of being able to maintain and preserve a sheet pile wall once constructed. We also believe that there would be necessity of the ownership as a means of being able to prove to Coastal that we would have the authority through ownership to be able to place additional stone embankment to be able to protect that wall. So at this point, the engineering services, which we had anticipated would accelerate in cost, we're asking for an increase of $34,500. The armor stone design at the $12,000, the boring layout and resident inspection of $5,000, and the boring subcontract. We're also looking at a, looking at a contingency increase of about $5,000 as we go forward. It's important to note that we do have in place the approval through Rhode Island Department of Transportation for the $1.6 million funding of the, of the initial project. We have also received a approval through the Corps of Engineers indicating that they will not need to review the application. We met today with representatives of state DOT in a, an additional step to determine whether there's any other outside agencies' reviews necessary before the federal systems' local road program requirements are totally met. So I think we have made considerable progress in terms of moving forward, both the application for the wall installation. We also applied for Coastal Ascent to be able to relocate all of the utility poles within the subject area. We've met with National Grid. National Grid has agreed, as a maintenance function, to relocate all the poles at no cost to the town. Opposition was that the poles needed to be relocated, not simply because we needed to drive the sheet steel in an area where the wires were located, but because without the sheet steel installation, the utility infrastructure was in jeopardy if, in fact, further erosion occurred. They agreed with that, that position, and have begun the mark out of the relocation of the poles. So the Coastal Ascent was approved on the poles. The Coastal Ascent associated with the sheet steel wall is pending. The town also directed through my office, the engineer, to prepare the application for the carpenter property for a maintenance permit, which was given across the counter, to deal with the the point of erosion of the stone wall closest to the Ocean Mist property. So I think we've made considerable progress in moving the application forward, and we are hopeful that in November, we will have more substantive reviews completed through the Coastal management staff as to the status of that application. So I would request the council provide the authorization as identified in item G of the agenda, and in accord with the memorandum submitted by Mr. Schach on October 3rd.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, do we have a motion, first of all?
I make, I make a motion to approve new business item G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions here at the table? Start with Jim, and then Carol.
Steve, just so I keep track of these things, how many applications in? Is there one separate one for the wall, a second one for the maintenance ascent, or are those one and the same?
No, those were separate, because the, that was, that's still private property, so the app, we prepared the application. We gave it to the property owner. They submitted it and received Coastal's approval. The third application was the application to relocate the poles. That was approved. So there's been three applications that St. Jean's been involved with on the town's behalf. The fourth, fourth application is the application for reclassification of that, those eight parcels, the beachfront in front of those eight parcels. That application is still under construction within the planning department.
Okay. The Army Corps of Engineer, did they waive their interest? Did they lay it off onto Coastal? Why did they back away from this? I thought that was always our great fear, if we'd gone forward towards the sea a little bit, but.
What they've indicated is that they will not need to have a formal review of our application. Normally, what would occur is that they would have a formal review that would be necessary. With that formal review, they would have multiple federal agencies that would be involved with that review. They've indicated that they can review the application as a component of the review process with the Coastal Resource Staff, rather than having to have a full planning meeting.
All right. And the only thing the Army Corps really had to review was the application to put the wall in?
For the wall, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they wouldn't be involved with the utility poles or the maintenance permits.
Okay, and then lastly, then I'll keep quiet, the $1.6 million, is that going to demand those either four or six-foot wide sidewalks, and what are we going to do about parking there?
No, in fact, the sidewalk is still at issue. At the current time, the design would show a sidewalk that would be three and a half feet with a six-inch curb reveal, so it would be a four-foot offset from the wall itself. We are dealing with DOT at this point. There are new ADA requirements coming down, and hopefully, those will not be instituted prior to the time that our application receives final approval. We believe that those new ADA requirements may in fact require a four-and-a-half-foot wide sidewalk, if the sidewalks installed there. It may be a case that we look to withdraw the sidewalk altogether, but we still haven't come up with any conclusions. What I've also got is a cross-section of the road being looked at to determine whether or not the installation of the sidewalk would include parking on one side or the other of the, of the road, and then what options are available. Is there additional right-of-way on the north side of the road itself, where there could be some type of relocation? That information I'll have before we come up with final design plans, and the council will be well-versed in that before we go forward.
Can the sidewalk on the north side be that substitute, or would we have to also have the sidewalk on the ocean side, south side, east side, whatever?
Well, obviously, the ocean, the only, the only thing that would be included at this point would be work on the sheet steel wall and the sidewalk that's on the south side. If there was work that was going to be done on the north side, it would certainly, most likely, be required through town dollars only. The, the total design cost on the, on this structure is through local dollars. What the agreement was with DOT would be that they would fund construction, but the design, the design would be the requirement of the town. They did incorporate into the agreement at our request that if we needed to purchase property, which we will be recommending, that they would, they would participate in that cost at 100%. So at this point, there's still a number of balls up in the air, but we're trying to get to a point where, one, we understand what conditions or restrictions Coastal would place on the application, or what additional requirements they would place on the application, and then what cost factors those would have at it. In addition, trying to determine whether or not the sighting of the sidewalk would in fact jeopardize the existing parking configuration that exists there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, all set. Further questions here at the table? Carol?
Steve, when we, on June 13th, we authorized the contract for the Marine Engineering Services of St. Jean. Were we just talking about the armor stone wall at the time? I thought we were talking about both.
We were talking about both. I think that there was a error made, it should have been at that point, both the 12,000s, there was only one 12,000 in the authorization. What we determined after that was that we did need to go forward with both, and I authorized those in advance of the council's approval.
So that's, all right. But, and then the last update that we got from you, we had, I think that was last month, or somewhere in October.
In August.
Like, September?
I thought it was late August or something.
Late August, yeah.
I don't have the file with me.
And, and that was, that clearly indicated that we're moving more towards the driven steel pile wall on the right-of-way.
It's the application that we submitted.
Okay.
We submitted that after we did the basic designs and determined that the, that the armor stone wall did not have any viability as far as the review being done with, with the Coastal staff, as well as what the structural requirements were going to be. When we looked at that, some of the requirements, based on where the footprint would be for that armor stone wall, would have it out into the, into the coastal zone itself, below the Mean High Water, where you would have to start it, and some of the rocks, based on the wave energy that it would have to absorb, based on the studies that were done, were as much as 22 tons.
Now, that would require a reclassification of the beach, is that right, to do the?
Yeah, it would require more than a reclassification. The real question would be whether or not it could be sited above the Mean High Water Mark, based on the scale and the size of the structure that would be necessary.
And the extra application was unanticipated for the maintenance ascent application. That's, that's something above and beyond. We didn't anticipate that, I don't think.
Yeah, because at the time your contract was signed, there was no erosion at that site that needed it. In fact, St. Jean provided that as a courtesy. There was no additional billing on it.
Thank you.
So, I just want to say, compliment to John and Steve's office for dealing with Coastal, DOT, National Grid, and the Army Corps of Engineer in this short period of time, and getting everything to where we are now. That's, that's a yeoman's effort, if any. It usually takes a lot longer dealing with some of these, these groups, and I appreciate all the effort that's been, that put through, and this timeline is a great reflection of the work that's been done.
Well, we've made good progress to date. Whether we get delayed as we go forward is yet to be seen. But, yeah, I, I agree that I think we've been able to accomplish a great deal. In fact, I should have the appraisal on the property this week, so at that point, we can begin to initiate discussions with the property owner.
Okay. Have, Steve, have any of the private property owners filed any applications, as far as you're aware?
Not to my knowledge. I have been advised that the eight property owners have met within the last two weeks and are prepared to file a single application for temporary measures.
Oh.
I have not seen the application, nor do I know who's preparing it on their behalf.
Any further questions? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 400. And the next item, aye, is a resolution authorizing the extension of a ward of contract originally granted on June 9th, 2008, to Farrell Gas, 100 Money Hill Road, Chappat, Rhode Island, for liquid propane, maintenance service, and associated materials according to the terms and conditions of the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement through December 31st, 2011, at the following price schedule.
On September 12th of 2011, the state extended a master price agreement that they had at the same price that had been set back on June 10th of 2008 for the transportation of the liquid propane. The town uses the propane at five different municipal buildings. The principal use for, for the town is in the Highway Department and the, and the Dog Pond. But there's also propane that's used in the water facility, as well as the Nature Center on, at Acea Pond. So the last price on a gallon was about $1.85, and the transportation cost is the 22 cents.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve new business item, aye.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 400. Last item on the agenda is new business item J. This is a resolution establishing the following fee schedule for emergency medical services and amending the town's schedule of fees, as further described in a memorandum from the Director of EMS to the Town Manager, Chief of Police and Finance Director, dated September 23rd, 2011, and this is going to be effective January 1st, 2012.
The fee structure that is presented in item J is a totally revised fee schedule from what exists today. What Director DeMello did was he reviewed what the fees were that were being charged by neighboring communities and projected a new schedule for each of the different service types. I want to preface my remarks by saying, the rates that are shown here are what the billable rates would be. About 80% of our runs, and we have about 2,800 runs a year, are Medicaid-associated. So Medicare-associated means that you are reimbursed, not at the rates that you established, but rather at the rates that Medicare sets for their reimbursement, from their reimbursement schedules. The, this schedule would be used in terms of dealing with insurances, either through Blue Cross or United as the principals, or dealing with insurance companies representing individuals that have been in automobile accidents, or personal insurances that people would have. Again, the process is that we establish the billing based on the schedule that's here. There's about $1.1 million in potential billing a year through this system. Of that $1.1 million, there's probably around $570,000 that's actually collected. A reason for the differential is, one, the actual reimbursement rates that are provided either through the healthcare providers or by Medicare, as well as the forgiveness of all fees for those persons who are without insurance at our service through the program. Just like a hospital, our responsibility is to provide care regardless of costs associated with being reimbursed. We provide those services regardless of what insurance or lack of insurance people have. We would set up a billing schedule for that, but the billing schedule is not one that we are going after individuals for unpaid balances. If they're a town resident and they receive services, and it was an automobile accident and they had nationwide insurance, the bill would go to Nationwide Insurance. If they had a medical seizure that had, that was Blue Cross-associated or United-associated, it would go, go to them, based on what their. United-associated, it would go, go to them. Based on what their reimbursement rate allowances are, we would receive our payment. The differential wouldn't be there. If the people were not from South Kingston, we would send them bills. However, the collection of that is for outstanding balances that aren't paid by a third-party provider are very low, as they are in each community. We use a third-party vendor that does the, the billing and the record-keeping on the system. I believe that with the new rate structure that's being proposed here tonight, we may see, based on past service uses, about a 5% to a 10% increase in what the potential revenue stream would be to the town, or around $50,000. Obviously, that is determined based on the services that are rendered, based on the schedule that's there. We can't guarantee on a yearly basis what that is. We see, we do see fluctuation. But I'd recommend that that schedule be instituted as of January 1st of 2012. This would give us ample opportunity to deal with a billing company, to get the new rate structure into their billing program, and, so that there would be less disruption in terms of setting those new schedules.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item J.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions?
Is that with the amendment for the January 1st?
Yes.
She already put that in.
Yeah.
No, you didn't. Okay.
It was for January 1st.
Yes, it was.
Right. So I read it. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries 400. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed abstention, motion carries 400. Meeting adjourned at 9:10. Thank you.